Hi.
Okay, so let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, Rod is here. Okay.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Great, so, Madam City Clerk, do we have any postponements?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I have a card from Peggy for Griffin for oral and a card from Jennifer that says, "Is the topic on the agenda?" Yes, but the subject is oral, but I think you mean oral. Okay, so, we have two Griffins here today. Welcome, Peggy. What?
Oh, it's on.
Oh, not the overhead. So since there's only two of you, you can each have three hours.
I want to thank you for what you're doing, but this is a general comment. I'd like that the city documents be correct as far as revisions and that they have be... Let me see it. This is the... I went on the city website and downloaded the whole big thing of the general plan. It's missing the amendment that happened in May for the housing element and Appendix B in Chapter Four. It's also should say the date that it was adopted initially. And I think because you have each of these individual chapters also available separately, that you should have the same thing on each chapter. Every time I download like a housing element, I'm scared I've got the wrong one and there's no way to tell unless I compare page by page. So I think they should have some kind of revision information. So also, so it's the housing element that was changed in May and Appendix B. Also, on your maps, you're not consistent on what's happened on the land use map. You've got adopted and amended and you've got the resolution, which is cool. But when you look at the zoning map, you've got created and updated. And I think you require a resolution if you're updating the zoning map. So this information should be... And I would use the same consistent words, adopted, amended, what's the resolution? Anyway, that's my suggestion.
Can you show the zoning map again? It was created in 2000?
That's what this says.
And the update is in 2018? What happened to 2014 with the general plan update?
Good question. This is what's on the website.
And this is not the updated version then? Because this is outdated already, I think.
I went...
Was there a new version council just adopted?
So I guess in addition to updating the documents themselves, the right versions ought to be posted?
Yeah. It would be nice. I think I always have trouble figuring out different versions of zoning map. It would be nice if multiple, I mean, all the different versions are archived, not just the most recent one. Yeah.
All of the history too?
Yeah, if there is a... Yeah, I think that would be nice.
So can the city attorney look into this whole issue?
Yes.
And it is true, going back through all the documents, there's a lot of sloppiness that has crept in over the years.
And also, I was trying to look for the heart of the city plan on the city website. The version that's there seems to be the December 4th, 2014 version. But as I understand, there are other, there were other amendments to the plan. And so I'm not sure if that's the latest or there are other amendments. Maybe a resolution should be included if it's amended. I think it's similar to the 2014 general plan. The version that's posted right now in the city, on the city website, was that the version that was adopted in 2014? I think it was not because there was an amendment in October 2015. But that amendment only included like red line changes of the general plan. And then somehow later, these changes were merged into the general plan. But that merged revised version, I think, was never adopted by the council. So I'm always confused. The version posted on the website, does that include amendment or not? So, do we know?
We can clarify that.
Yeah. If we, if the webpage can make it clear what, exactly which version is posted.
Next is Jennifer Griffin. We missed you last night. I know, but you didn't speak.
I had a cold.
Oh.
But I think I'm all well known, it's so warm in the lobby. Yes, I seem a little rattled. I was here really late, like you all were early yesterday. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and there are some very, very troubling things going on in Oregon with their battle over HB 2001 and Portland's problems and some of the other cities. It appears now that Portland, okay, as I have stated, HB 2001, which is equivalent to HSB 330 and 35 in California, all rolled into one bundles of fun for the citizens of the state, was signed by their governor on August 8th. And a mere five months after this sweeping bill was introduced in by the Speaker of the House of Portland in January, as I have said, Eugene immediately objected within weeks. And the governor saw fit and their Senate to override the objections of one of the most highly educated cities in the state. Now, how you explain that, I don't know. But one of the other troubling things that's happened is that in Portland, it has appeared that they are trying to eliminate homeowners associations. That to me is one, that is way beyond anything that we've even seen in California. We have to watch this because Portland has, if anybody's been there, they have neighborhoods that are over 100 years old, they're very intact, very, very vigilant homeowner cessation. It would be like you had Willow Glen rolled into some of the Stanford neighborhoods, Professoreville. And when you have a city attempting to override the homeowners associations and not taking any of their input, I, by their, evidently their community involvement person from Portland is the one that authorized this, it's like, how could this happen? So right now is a lot of the people in Portland are beginning to question what is happening. There have been lawsuits filed. And right now, Portland is not recognizing historical neighborhoods. We are looking at descent into hell. I mean, I think a lot of people in Oregon, I know other people, are beginning to wonder what has happened. Is this a coup d'etat? Is this something that happened at the state level that was kept from the residents? I think it bears watching. There, I haven't seen San Jose taking over and stifling Willow Glen because that's one of their strongest neighborhoods. In fact, it's called a strong neighborhood historically. But it could happen in California. So we need to watch what's happening in Oregon. They're living this drama. I know people in Portland right now that are living this drama and waking up and saying, "What the heck happened?" Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, no more oral. We are on and there's no consent calendar. So we are on to ordinances, action items, there's only one. And it's the study session regarding the status of the objective standards, update to general plan, zoning ordinance, fiscal year 2019 to 2020 work program item. So do we have a staff report?
We do. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Got a brief presentation for you to get us started tonight. As the mayor had mentioned, it's the topic on objective standards, update to the general plan and also zoning. So what is an objective standard? I think the state has defined the standard as one that's obviously not subjective and involves no personal judgment by staff, city staff, or a public official. And objective standards could potentially include the likes of permitted uses, densities, heights, setbacks, FAR, design guidelines, and what have you. What is not an objective standard? These are just sort of some examples not taken out of any immunity codes that we're aware of, such as projects that are display high quality design, respect private views, consistent with the context, meet adequate onsite parking, design with acceptable materials and design features. These are not objective as they are quite subjective. So why have objective standards? Obviously, one, we have some state mandated streamlined project approvals that we have to, as a city and city staff, have to upkeep. Also, to provide a more clear general plan and zoning requirements to the public so that you don't need any interpretations or it couldn't be interpreted any particular way. And finally, probably most important, to establish expectations for everybody. That includes applicants, members of public, city staff, council members. So with that, we have three phases of proposed objective standards. These were reviewed, evaluated by the planning commission on two separate public meetings and gathered from members of public, council members, planning commission, city staff, city attorney's office. Phase one in your attachment A, you will see that these are areas in which development standards can be strengthened. And we envision these items could commence immediately. They require less resources and it could be easily accommodated. The second phase is what we call Phase Two. These are original items, items that were in the original Phase Two document also in your attachments. You would see that it was, I think, about 55, 60 items. Planning commission at its hearings identified these items to be, to warrant some additional merit to be pulled out of Phase Two, more immediate attention, but not quite as immediate in terms of resources goes compared to Phase One. So these will ideally commence within the next six months or so. That brings us to Phase Two. These are much, much larger, more comprehensive projects that will require additional resources than we have currently identified in our work program. So the idea here is to incorporate these items over time into our future work items, work program items, and you will see that coming back to you in that setting. Planning commission recommends three recommendations. Basically, one, to proceed with proposed Phase One items immediately. Number two, create a Phase 1.5 with items originally from Phase Two, but yet may earn more emphasis and attention than the rest of Phase Two items. Number three, to proceed with Phase Two items on a longer term basis. Now with our, within our staff report, we identified a number of actions for council to consider tonight. Basically, we're asking, generally, we're asking you is, do you agree with the commission's recommendation? Move forward with Phase One, 1.5, Phase Two? Are there any items that you want us to remove or to add or in or to reprioritize? So with that, our recommendation is that a city council receive our staff report, presentation, and public comments and provide direction to staff how you wish to proceed. With me, we have a senior planner, John Martier, from the planning division. We also have our in-house land use attorney, Seth Peta, across the podium here. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So do you want to go over what's in Phase One and Phase 1.5 and Two?
Sure. We can certainly do that if the council wishes to go over those items.
I do because I haven't read this yet. Believe it or not, I was busy last night.
Can you talk about timeline a little bit more first on Phase One and 1.5? So Phase Two would be future items that will need a new work program for maybe next year, right? So 1.5 would be, still be within the scope of this year, the current work item, but a little longer. So what's the timeline like?
Yeah, we'll certainly try to fit in 1.5 we possibly can within a current work program. The idea of that is we have a pretty heavy work program, as you can imagine, and we're moving forward with the existing five planners in our planning division on these work program items. So we'll have to look at, to see how quickly we can get to this 1.5. The idea is we can start within the next six months or so and see where that takes us. Items in Phase One, we imagine we can start that now. In fact, I believe we already started one of the items without your approval tonight. But just to move forward on those items, we can certainly do that right away. Does that answer your question?
So I think for Phase One, you mentioned earlier that you are looking at maybe an estimate of four months that we might have a version we can adopt?
Yeah, so I think I was referencing maybe around two to four months, something like that, right?
Yeah. Okay. And then for 1.5, you are looking at...
Six to 12 months.
Starting at, in six months and maybe a possible adoption of some version in 12 months?
Correct.
Okay.
So I believe I heard the mayor have a desire to go through Phase One items, so I'll do my best to do so. John and Seth will jump in. When we need. So Phase One, this is attachment A for members of public that are following along. First item, we have the existing figure LU2, which is a community form diagram. And this provides the height and setback standards. Within it, there's a footnote, footnote number one, talks about how to maintain the primary building bulk below one-to-one slope line drawn from the arterial boulevard/boulevard curb line or lines except for the crossroad areas. So the clarification we're presenting here is to revise the note to state that the applicable standards in the zoning code governs the setbacks and height limits proportions to sites that are not adjoining arterials or boulevards. How do you do that? Well, we do that, we propose doing that by deleting the word "primary" and "bulk." We think those may be misleading or confusion, confusing, I should say. Instead, the commission recommends that we add avenues and major connectors after the words arterial/boulevard.
So can you explain why crossroads is excluded?
So the... What we're proposing to do is to delete also, if you go further down on page two on the same document, to delete except for the crossroads area because technically it's not excluded. So we want to clarify that by just removing that reference.
So I read that somewhere it mentioned because the original plan wants to have a different crossroad area, streets gap plan? So that's why it was, there was an exception, but that's never developed.
That's correct. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So that's why we are removing that?
That's correct. Thank you.
So right now, the stop line is for arterial street. And for other neighborhood street, currently, we don't have any slope line specified. For example, if we have a mixed-use project, there a street in their back, in front will be arterial street, but in the back, on the side will be just regular street. So there isn't zero slope line?
So I'll let our senior planner, John Martier, respond to that.
Yeah, John Martier, senior planner, yeah, you are correct, Vice Mayor.
Then that seems not acceptable. I think before, maybe the council will be approving a project. So it's unlikely a developer will build to right to the property line. But now with streamlining, it's possible they will build right to the property line. So for example, the Marina, and they might have front, in front, next to Stevens Creek, they might be, there is a one-to-one slope line. But then the neighbor street, I think it's Bendley? Is it Bendley? Then there is no slope. If they can build right to the, a very narrow street, one-lane street, they can build right next to the curb. And then in the back of their building, the north side, they can build right to the curb. If that's not the intention of the council, maybe we should just fix that in Phase One.
I mean, there, I mean, the... Yeah. We might not have a slope line, but there are certain setback requirements at different parts of the city too.
So what's the setback requirement?
Well, it depends on the part of the city. I mean, certain parts of the city have special areas or specific plans or different design guidelines that will guide development in those specific areas itself.
So are we sure every area has this specified? Or maybe the general plan should add a certain default statement that for all the non-arterial street, we would like to have a setback or a slope of one point, one-to-one, unless it's otherwise specified in other plans? That way, at least by default, we'll have some standard.
So for the areas that don't have those special setbacks or whatnot, we do have, under footnote three on page three, we do have a recommendation to add certain types of clarifying language for maximum heights and minimum setbacks for residential neighborhoods. That's one of the areas that are recommended for change as part of this.
Oh, right.
Can you tell us where that is that you're referring to on page three?
So if you go under the third column, City Attorney Office and Staff Propose Clarification, A.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one that I would point out that, you know, I kind of am surprised about is like Falco Parkway. And, you know, prior to that being built, meaning Rose Bowl and then Main Street, I would have expected there to be at least somewhat of a gradual, but instead, it's right out at the sidewalk and then straight up, not 45 feet, but 60 feet. So I think we need something that is going to reflect what the residents, you know, expect so that they're not surprised. The interesting thing about Falco Parkway is that it isn't a heavily traveled, it's kind of hidden, you know? But other streets, you know, like Mandley or Mary or some of these other ones, where, wow. I had one resident who had the postcard from the Westport Oaks and when I was at the Fall Festival this last weekend, and she said, "That's like throwing a brick in my forehead." And, you know, she had her description. And I think for the most part, you know, that I'm not surprised that something 60 feet right out at the sidewalk on major streets like that, if it was back near a freeway on-ramp or off-ramp, if it was behind a shopping center, maybe we are less sensitive. And that's not to say that the developer can't come and ask. I will always say over and over again, the developers always have the ability to come and ask for a general plan amendment. But my concern is, is the sense of that it's their, there, there's a word I'm looking for. Entitlement. That it's, that, you know, it's an entitlement. And then how do we as a city, you know, argue something like that that comes at you so clear? It's an entitlement, you know? If we have some type of gradual, okay, the one-to-one actually, I think, sounds pretty good. And then if he were to come back, the night that the Goodyear Hotel, you know, I was kind of voicing, you know, is the request to go beyond the general plan, is it another 10%, 20%, 50%? And so if we have kind of a basic that, hey, everybody understands, that's, that represents the character of the city. If the developer comes and says, "Wow, I can really do so much more for the, for the community. I can put so much more, you know, benefits for the city." We could have some small office things on the second floor and maybe some other types on the third floor. But we want it to be closer to the street or something. Let them make their case without the word entitlement, you know? So I would really be... So I would really be looking for something like that beyond Stevens Creek, Deanza Boulevard, you know. Um, one of the residents had actually, uh, uh, said, well, what happens over on Homestead? And so I think Homestead would be, you know, another one, um, Wolf Road, uh, you know, so. Just making sure that, that we meet what the residents' expectations are. And they're not shocked and surprised after the fact. Yeah, so.
Can I get back to the number footnote number three? You pointed out that it's addressed in footnote number three. But the proposed clarification doesn't look very objective. The proposed clarification is meant to clarify where a specific plan or area plan has been adopted. There are established the maximum height and minimum setback from residential neighborhoods. And also state that reduced heights or increased setbacks adjusted to single family residential areas. May be required, which could only be determined during project review. It's still not, it's still discretionary, so that means basically there is no standard next to ne- residential neighborhood.
So that's part of the process is, is that we will be coming up with those standards and coming back to council with those standards.
Oh, so you will be coming back to propose the standard. So should we be talking about what standard we would like right now or?
Well, it's, I think it's up to council if you want to do that, we do have a number of different items. I think what we intend, our intent was to say, if you agree with these items in phase one, for example. You say, yes, Steph, go ahead, we'll allocate resources and we'll come back and say, these are the, so the, the, uh, objective standards that we come up with. Um, and that, at that time, we can kinda.
Okay, so when you come back and you also clarify, as you said, there are, they are defined all over the place in. I, it says Saratoga, Sunnyvale zoning plan, North, Deanza, um, conceptual zoning plan. And if you can make a summary of all these setback slope that's defined everywhere.
Absolutely, yes.
Be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so I had a, going back to page one, where it says the primary building bulk. Et cetera, um, drawn from the arterial boulevard curb line. So if you were at the Rose Bowl. Would the primary arterial be Wolf Road or would it be Falco Parkway? I mean, could, you could have something very high along Falco Parkway and say, well. Wolf Road is actually the arterial and we're setback from Wolf Road. Or, you know, you could say, well, most of the Rose Bowl is along Falco Parkway, so that should be setback, but it isn't.
So a- as it's written right now, it would be along Wolf Road. But so Falco Parkway doesn't have the one to one slope, only Wolf Road, only the Wolf Road portion wouldn't.
Right, so on, so on Falco Parkway. Wait, how many lanes is it now? Didn't they take away one lane? It used to be three in each direction. I think now it's two in each direction. So that's, to me, that would still be an arterial, it's still divided, I believe, if I remember correctly.
You mean Falco Parkway?
Falco Parkway.
That's not considered arterial.
Right, so, well, there's the problem, you can say, okay, well, it's not an arterial, even though it's really the bulk of the building is on.
That's why we need standard.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we need to somehow address that kind of thing because someone could. Design a building in a way where it's really tall, right up against residences, but it's in the back of the sides.
So Mayor, Mayor, if, if I can, so part of that, item number one, that's a really good question. What the planning commission recommended to remove, uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, to add avenues and major connectors, remove. I'm sorry, and and as of that, as a result of that, to also clarify on page two, clarify that slope line drawn from the curb line of any frontage. So that kinda takes away.
Okay, okay.
While you're speaking, takes away the subjective judgment of whi- which frontage to pick and.
Right, I should have read this in advance.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand this part. So slope line is drawn from the curb line of any frontage road abutting the property. So, but then the curb line, sometimes a developer would change it. The curb line, right? So does that, is the curb line of the proposed development or the property line?
Oh, isn't the curb line the curb of the street?
Yes, the curb line is the curb of the street.
Right, the developer would not be able to change that normally. Yeah.
So that's why, um, they may or may not, right?
Yeah, what do you do if part of the development is, well, we're changing the street and changing the curb?
Especially if we add bike paths, right?
It would go off the new curb line, so wherever the curb line's proposed to be, you still have that same. The slope line would be determined from the proposed curb line if the curb line is indeed going to be changed.
So maybe you want.
If street widening was part of the development proposal, then you would go off the new street curb line.
That makes sense, and maybe you want to clarify that, yeah. And, uh, page one and two, the planning commissioners have added a whole list. New list of, um, streets considered as arterial street. And I think there's so slope would all become one to one. I actually, I think most of the heart of the city slope line. Uh, Deanza, okay, Deanza slope line is one point five, right? And Stevens Creek, most of the existing buildings have a lot wider setback and slope. But the newer ones are really tight to the Stevens Creek, that's one point to one. Do we want to keep that? And now this amendment from the Planning Commission is trying to apply this very tight slope line. To the rest of the city, including Foothill, Stevens Creek from eighty-five to Foothill. To Bob Road, to Bollinger, to Miller, is that something we want to support? And I, and we are thinking about streamlined the project. I don't think we want to give that away now. I would rather that we keep one point five throughout the city, even including Stevens Creek in the heart of the city. Oh, actually, no, heart of the city is one point five, only in Falco is one to one, right? So somehow we are giving Falco this spatial treatment, but the rest of the Stevens Creek is still one point five. If that's the case, why do we set one to one for the rest of Stevens Creek? What's the? So I guess it's good to clarify all these are arterial streets. But then I hope that we are setting that one point five, not one to one. Right, you agree? So I see two council members nothing.
So I, I will, just to step back a little bit here, um, like, part of the point of this was to make. To identify areas that, um, needed some clarification. And were things that we could do quickly without additional environmental review. Um, and to kinda like fill those gaps right away. To, so to the extent that you all tonight want to start engaging in substantive amendments to the provisions of the general plan. That's a slightly different exercise and may involve additional, um, review that we'd have to do. And so, um, I, so I, you know, we want to get your input, but I just want to caution that if, if there are substantive changes that are being made. It might not be able to fit within the timeframe that we've explained.
This standard that's set by the planning commission is new anyway, it's not there. So I'm not adding something new if they get to change it to add one to one, why can't I modify that to one point five?
Yeah, and and I, I don't have all the details on all of this, so, I mean, I, and I think what you could do is say. You know, to the extent it won't delay the process or, you know, if, um.
Because otherwise, the one to one, where did that come from?
Vice Mayor, Seth wanted to explain.
Hi, and I, since I haven't had a chance to meet all of you, I'm, I'm Seth Peta from Shoot Mahal.
We wondered who you were.
Meet you tonight, nice to meet you, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you very much. Guy that came in off the street.
You dress them up nicely, you sit on the dais, no, nobody says anything.
Well, very nice to meet, uh, you all and to be here tonight. So, um, it might help to understand, uh, since I understand you are all up late very, uh, uh, very late last night. What this phase one attachment A table you're looking at shows, so it has four different columns. Uh, the, the second row on the first page, uh, obviously refers to, uh, the community form diagram. Uh, LU two, which you know. Then the, the first column shows what the existing footnote is. So, um, uh, to the Vice Mayor's comment, the existing footnote states, uh, a- as, uh, uh, what is shown in. In footnote one, so there is currently a one to one slope line on LU two. Um, and, and then, uh, through planning staff's work and the city attorney's office work. We identified a potential issue with that, uh, existing standard. And then we and staff proposed a clarification, and as, um, the city attorney notes, this would be a kind of a minor clarification. Um, to fit the work into the timeline that is set forth in the staff report. And then, as you note in the fourth column, the planning commission recommended some more specific edits to that existing footnote. So there is currently a one to one slope line, which is referred to elsewhere in this document as the default one to one slope line that applies. Where a more, uh, specific or different slope line is not, um, in effect currently. So, um, and and as the city attorney pointed out, we are suggesting minor changes to the language just to tighten it up. And not to impose entirely new development standards.
So what's unclear about the original footnote?
So the, um, the, the language that we identified is potentially vague. Um, i- is, is, uh. Is, is discussed in really columns two through, through four. But, but I think what you'll see, the, the planning commission recommended is remove terms such as primary and bulk. Um, because I think we'd all agree here that, that it's not, uh, objectively clear. What primary building bulk means or what the bulk of a building is, that could have different definitions.
I agree, should be removed, but, uh, why do we have to identify the list of streets now?
So that, um, to be clear, the italicized text in the fourth column is staff's comments. Clarifying comments on the planning commission's recommendation. So looking at this now, I realize that, that is not clear, just from looking at this. That, that, that italicized text is not what the planning commission said at their meeting. That's helpful text that the staff added to put the planning commission's recommendation into context for you. So, um, those boulevards at the, that start on page one and go on to page two of the fourth column. They would not be explicitly added to LU two. This is just to help you understand where those, the one to one slope line would apply. If you were to add avenues and major connectors to the current footnote.
So current footnote, if we only remove the primary, primary and bulk, it would read. Maintain the building, uh, below. A one to one slope in line drawn from arterial boulevard slash boulevard curb line.
It would actually read, i- if we adopt, if you had chose to move forward with these changes, it would read, maintain the building. Below a one to one slope line drawn from the arterial slash boulevard. Slash avenue slash major connector curb line or lines. And then there, there might be a clarification, as you see on page two, that the slope line is drawn from the curb line of any frontage road. Abutting the property.
Right, but you are adding avenue and major connectors. The original virgin doesn't have avenue and major connectors, right?
And I, and I'd just like to point out that the, that, that our office's recommendation, like currently now. If there isn't, um, for sites that aren't off of the, um, arterial boulevards. Then the setbacks and heights established in the zoning code would govern. And our recommendation was to make that clear in the general plan. So when you see the third, uh, column over there, it was to revise to state. That the applicable standards in the zoning code govern setback and height limits for portions of site. Sites that are not adjoining arterials or boulevards, so we're pulling in those standards from the zoning code and adding them to the general plan. And then the planning commission said, that's great, you know, in addition, um, here's some additional recommendations we want to make. And then there's the staff comments on those additional recommendations if, if council wants to move forward with them, which I believe. Staff is recommending or saying that could be done in this phase.
Okay, so let me understand, current standard, one to one applies only to arterial and boulevard. Which only means Stevens Creek and Deanza, not the rest of the streets. And now you are recommending to add avenues and major connectors. Those currently do not have a standard for slope. And we are adding those, but then you are adding it one po- one to one. Since we are adding a new standard for slope line for this non arterial medium sized, the street, a lot of them. Um, not as wide as Stevens Creek and Deanza, I would like to ha- see one point five sto- slope line instead of one to one. If we are adding this anyway, so why can't we do a one point five? I don't understand that.
Maybe, maybe we can, I'm just saying that as a, as a larger picture, as you go through all of these, that, you know, we'll, we'll have to do a little bit more analysis each time.
Cannot change that since this is.
No, I was suggesting just as we go through these processes, just be aware that to the extent. Like, we're, we're making changes, that we might have to analyze that further to see if it would require additional analysis. So that wasn't meant as a comment specific to this, but just something to think about as we're going through all of these.
Because the analysis that would apply for these extra streets, either is one to one or one point five, that it will be the same amount of analysis. I'm not adding extra analysis by changing it from one to one point five, right? Just want to clarify, okay.
So wouldn't the setback and the height also be determining the slope line? I mean, it seems like we have.
Not really.
So. If you got setback from the, the street and you have a limited height, doesn't that determine the slope up to the highest point?
No, but what it does is does further scope down the building.
Exactly, yeah, it, right, it, it further scopes it down. So you could have, it could be impossible to even do the slope just because of the setback in the height. You know, you couldn't have the maximum slope if the height and the setbacks didn't, didn't allow it. Is that true or not, or am I misunderstanding it?
Uh, you know, you, you bring up a goo- a good point, a good question, so you ma- you're making me think a lot about what's been recently approved. So I'm trying to think about the veranda, which is approaching the maximum height, they've met the setback, they've met the slope line. And they've actually met the height, so they, I believe, they were able to achieve all three of those with the current slope of one to one.
I think I can help clarify. With the slope line, you are gonna get to the maximum height.
Right.
You are gonna get there, it's just a matter of how many feet at one to one before you reach that. And then from that point on, the, you know, the height stays at that forty-five feet to sixty.
The height doesn't go up, right.
So, so I, I see the, uh, building plane is really what sets the streetscape.
Can I use, can we use Verinda as an example? What's the setback and the slope for that project?
Uh, it's conforming to, to the H O C, so one to one and thirty-five, actually, I, I think it's even further back, thirty-seven feet. Although the minimum is thirty, the maximum, I'm sorry, the minimum is thirty-five.
Okay, let's say it's thirty-five, what that means is we'll have a thirty-five, I don't know, can I draw here? No, not right now, so there, when, it's, there is a presentation I can draw. So let's say we have thirty-five feet, uh, setback, and the slope is, uh, this is a street. Thirty-five feet setback, the slope is from, not from the thirty-five feet, it's from the curb, right?
So they're both from the curb line.
From the curb, so there will be slope and then setback.
Right, then you can draw.
Yeah, okay.
So architectural features, it includes chimneys, what else does it include? I mean, isn't there a law in California that new homes have to have solar installed when they're built? Is that an architectural feature or is that something else?
Typically, we don't consider, um, solar as an architectural feature, so if you, if we're just looking at single family homes, right? We, like patio, not patio covers, but like, um, the front of your. We, like patio, not patio covers, but like the front of your home, you have like a cover for your front door, right? You would have a chimney, for example, would be one. Even a bay window, as long as you're not able to step into it.
Right.
Those are considered architectural features.
So, so what I'm thinking of, I've seen houses where the house is, the back, the back of the house is facing the wrong way for solar. So they put up a structure on the roof, kind of, so the panels are really high and tilted, tilted up towards the sun. So it's way above the roof line, but it's not an architectural feature. So that would be allowed, even though it could be intrusive to the neighbor.
Correct.
Okay. All right, should we move on?
So one more thing that's mentioned on page four. Thank you for bringing up that, for neighborhood, that in North Blaney neighborhood, that's right next to the Apple Infinity Loop. I think it's a single-family residential neighborhood, right behind mixed-use potential. Right now it's office, but it could be mixed-use in the future. And there are no streets separating the neighborhood from the mixed-use. As I said, it's similar to the North Blaney neighborhood neighboring the Valco property. So would we have a different standard when it's neighborhood immediately adjacent to mixed-use site? Because this is different from when there might be a street. If it's right next, we might need a bigger setback and slope?
Yes, so currently.
So would we set a different standard for that?
Right, currently we do not. That's why the planning commission recommended that we adopt new development design guidelines that, that can be objectively applied to any of those single-family residential developments that are but mixed-use, higher-density projects.
So why do we do that in phase two? It seems this is very important, we should do that in phase one. If we can do that for medium street like Miller, why can't we just set a setback and slope standard for mixed-use project, P-zoning project right next to the neighborhood?
I think we have that on phase one. You're talking about the phase, attachment A?
Page four.
Page four.
Page four.
Yeah, so those are all phase one.
Attachment A, it says adopt development and design guidelines that can objectively be applied to any housing development and mixed-use development in phase two.
Oh, I see. Yeah, so the, the planning commission, I apologize. The planning commission understands that, that this, this is a, a big item that in order to come up with a design guidelines or development standards, will take additional time and resources, not easily identifiable.
Okay, so this is a more complex design guideline.
Yes, yeah.
So what I'm asking for is a simple, right now for phase one, let's at least have slope and setback before we have the complex, which might take two years, right, from the timeline we have.
So we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that. We'll have to look at how that impacts, if we're just talking about specifically for this area right here, the North Blaney neighborhood? Or are we talking about a greater residential in general? I think that has a greater impact.
I guess in general, any residential that's right next to mixed-use. It could be the Wilson neighborhood, Park neighborhood, for example. They have a single-family home right next to the commercial area. I think all along Stevens Creek, we have single-family homes that back up to res, to commercial area. So if any of them got developed before we develop any guideline, the developer can, can build to zero setback, zero slope today. So I think we need to fix that as soon as possible.
Yeah, so I think this was discussed at planning commission as well. I think the commission in general was concerned about the actual design of the project.
I'm not talking about that, I mean.
If you're instituting a different kind of slope or setback, would you have more of a pyramid kind of a design, where a wedding cake type design? What kind of setback is appropriate for different neighborhoods? Would you, would you institute more landscaping as, as a buffer? So, but if, if the council feel like that you want us to set up some kind of simple setback and slope for now, while we study that, we can certainly look into that, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's two-step, yeah. First, have some standard today, and then we can develop a more, better guideline later.
Yeah, I, I think those homes on the east side of Deansah that are beyond commercial, behind the commercial buildings, I remember when they built the Aloft Hotel, there was a big concern, even though it was across Deansah Boulevard, that the height, it wasn't setback and in the upper rooms, they could basically look into the people's backyards. And for building, but there's buildings much closer to those houses as well. I mean, the Apple campus, right, the Infinite Loop campus is a great example. Even though there's no road between the houses, I guess there's kind of a little green space area, but I don't even know if that's required to be maintained as green space or if they could build right up to the line.
So this item, you are saying the planning commission does, does or does not, does not recommend doing even the design guideline for phase two? So do you need guidance from the council? Do we want to have design guideline?
Yeah, I think the council, if the council feel like you, you want some kind of temporary minimal solution to provide some kind of setback and, and direct staff to look at that, we certainly can. I just don't know whether that would involve any sort of environmental C-Quot analysis or not, but we'll definitely look into that. If it doesn't, and it can be implemented, we'll certainly do that.
That's for phase one, right?
Phase one, correct.
A simple setback. But what my question is second, my question, I think we know that the council think we want to have some simple setback slope for phase one. But the comment here specifically from planning commission, they voted down, is do we want to develop a more detailed design guideline for mixed-use development in phase two or not? Because P-zoning right now in our municipal code doesn't have a lot of stuff in there, so.
Yeah, I would disagree with the planning commission.
So we want to pursue that, okay, so.
Just because, I mean, one reason is we've had so many of these failed mixed-use projects and, you know, maybe there's something we could do that would ensure their success in the future. I'm not sure.
I, I can clarify something here if needed. Two things, to the, the vice mayor's comment that there perhaps could be some kind of a stopgap or short-term setback solution. There is a comment in the staff report under the phase one header that says as part of phase one, there could be some zoning ordinance amendments to clarify the development standards that apply in the P-zone that may overlap slightly with what you're talking about, even if there's a longer-term effort to do those in a more thorough manner in phase two. And, and that's already included in the phase one timeline. And then with regard to the comment just brought up, I don't believe the planning commission actually voted down the idea of adopting development and design guidelines that can be objectively applied to any housing development or mixed-use development. They just didn't like the idea by a vote of three to two about doing that through a form-based code.
They are okay with, they want some guideline, just not form-based code. So they are disagreeing on how to this, how to do the guideline?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so they do want a guideline, they just, you're right, they do want some kind of guidelines, they're just not, they're disagreeing about the process.
So I guess we can decide on that later, do we want form-based, based code or not?
Isn't the form-based going to be more concrete, more defined?
That, that can be the result of a form-based code, which, and I should really leave this explanation of what form-based code is, to the extent you'd like it to the, to planning staff. But that can be one outcome of adopting a form-based code.
You know, our, our purpose is really to make sure everything is very specific and detailed, and form-based really makes that very clear from the examples that I've seen. Again, a developer can always come back and ask for variances and things of that nature. And if the residence will support it, then, you know, he'll most likely prevail. So, but if we take out the form-based and leave it more a verbiage description, I, I think we're going to wind up in a linguistics debate.
So, yeah, I just want to make the purpose, the reason we're kind of rushing objective standards, the same reason we kind of, you know, rushed the item a couple of weeks ago, is what happened because there were no objective standards for height at the Valco property. And we tried in 2016 to put those in before the SB 35 law passed, but we were unsuccessful in having a council majority for that. And if we had, it probably would have saved the city a lot of money. But we are, we are where we are. But we really need to get these standards in place, so we don't have more incidents like that.
Yeah, so when we consider the design guideline, can we also include the FAR using floor area ratio to define the density? The idea for that is then it's less likely we'll have this bulky square rectangle building, because the developer could have more pleasing, aesthetically pleasing building if it's a FAR. Because if it's only setback in height, they'll tend to squeeze in every last bit of concrete in there that tend to be rectangular. Yeah, okay, so please consider that. So anyone, so page five, let's go on to page five. The heart of the city spatial area. Oh, I, I was just a little not sure what's the proposed language. So I guess you are saying the proposed language will come back later, right? Because here you are just saying you will do something.
That's correct.
I think my comment would be always, you know, making it very specific in the conservative respect. And again, the developer can always come back and ask for more. I mean, with respect to, to housing, as we've seen with Valco, they're going to go right to the max, 35 everywhere, plus the density bonus on top. And we're back to more or less very square, bulky developments as opposed to if we have something more that's the, on the conservative side, and I'm fine with putting a statement in there that doesn't allow for a developer to designate that he has an entitlement. And that is, it says, says here what we were just looking at, five to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 35. Take the lower on, on those, maybe not the first one that says five to 10. But then a footnote that could say, a developer can always ask for a general plan amendment for density, but it cannot exceed the 35. So he can ask, but it's not an entitlement.
Yeah, so I, I have the same concern, actually. So, and, and I think that the, the missing part of the description is the concept of the allocation. So back in, at the end of 2014, when we said, look, we want this particular category to be provisional, we are not putting this into this space. And in that case, it was office. Your, your predecessor, Director Fu, said, well, you're not doing that. If you just give the allocation, that gives the developer the ability to ask, but you, council, have the ultimate right to go ahead and approve that. Now, I guess the question now is, with these various mechanisms brought forth by diverse state statutes, how do we avoid having something that was merely an allocation previously turn into an automatic entitlement? And is that answer basically, well, if it was an allocation before and you're in danger of having that turn into an entitlement under these new state statutes, then you better not have allocations? I mean, is, is that, is that essentially, because, you know, there are these other couple of examples where you can think of something as like floor area ratio. Floor, floor area ratio seems very straightforward. If you meet the floor area ratio, then that would seem like you met that particular standard. And then with regard to, to density, what Councilmember Woolley is describing, I, I think may be actually a pretty good example of where you can preserve your rights, where, and, and I'm just, you know, using, you know, random numbers, but if you say 30 dwelling units per acre is acceptable to ask for, but only 20 dwelling units per acre is, is allowed, but you can ask for up to 30 and we'll consider. Are, are we treading on thin ice in this new legislative regime we find ourselves in if we have that kind of, you know, ambiguity, I guess you could call it? Or, or is that actually something that we could more safely, you know, maneuver within i- in, in terms of that type of category? So I guess the general question is, you know, are we really looking to really get rid of those kinds of, kind of neutral area, you know, seemingly neutral area in a previous scheme classifications? Or do we have some maneuvering room in, in, in particular types of categories? So.
Yeah, I, personally, I would not like that ambiguity in there. Someone is going to try to take advantage of it.
It would seem like it.
And we can't, I mean, we just can't predict exactly what will happen and how someone will twist some of these new laws to their own benefit. So, yeah, I would not, I mean, the property owner always knows they can come back for a GPA. I mean, I mean, they all know that, right? We don't have to say that explicitly.
Along the same note, I think I mentioned this to Heather and Seth also. The, our zoning map, for example, for the Bob Road area, I'm just picking one example. The LU two community form diagram specify for Bob Road, there is a residential density of 20 units per acre, maximum height 45 feet. And then I looked at the, the zoning of Bob Road area. It's PML and P something else, and there is no residential zoning there. However, as we have learned from Valco experience, they can come now and say the entire area of Bob Road is zoned for residential, they can build 20 units per acre. So I don't know how big is the whole, the entire Bob Road area. And so, and, and then I think the intent of the, this map, when the previous council approved that, they didn't mean for the entire Bob Road area to be residential at 20 units per acre, just like the council didn't mean for the entire Valco to be 35 units per acre. An original intention was if you put some residential in the site, that building bulk would be about 35 units per acre. I think that was the intention for this also. Is if you put some residential in the Bob Road area, that building, building box would be about 20 units per acre on the footprint of that building. But then the interpretation now has been this 20 units per acre is not on the footprint of the building, but applies to the entire mixed-use area, even though other areas have different uses. So I think we need to clarify here the original intent. So how can we do that?
The one that I might ask that might help us. The one that I might ask that might help us understand. So for Marina, which I think was eight acres, six acres or eight acres, and the housing is designated for four acres, and the hotel is for the other acreage, you know, how is it that the developer didn't do what Valco did, and Marina say, I want this 35 units over the entire eight acres? They only are limited to the four acres, plus their density bonus gave them 188 units, and the hotel was the other one, whereas with Valco, the entire site housing and essentially so much of the site, office on top, you know, I mean, combining things as opposed to separate. And so in that respect, Marina was a more appropriate division, for lack of a better word. How, what is it that prompted Marina to do that? What limited them? Because did they just do it by accident? Did they do it to be a good neighbor? Or is there something on paper that we could then copy?
I think for that particular project, that was just the project program that the developer had came forward with. So there wasn't necessarily anything that we had negotiated, but it was as part of the program that they wanted to incorporate as part of development.
So what I'm proposing here is for phase one to clarify, not downzoning, not changing the zoning, but clarify the original intent of the LU1, LU2 figure. When that council approved that, it doesn't mean the entire Bob Road will be 20 units per acre. What do they mean is actually most likely 20 units per acre on the footprint of whatever building that you are building on, right? And that should be clarified. I don't think this will be changing anything because the EIR that was done for the general plan at the time was done with the intention, with, I think, the proper assumption of the intent, right? So...
The EIR would have analyzed the maximum development potential.
But the EIR would not, no, the EIR analyzed, I think, 244, 21 units at the time for the plan bay area estimate at the time. And that wasn't maximum development potential of all the sites in our here. Otherwise, Valco would be already 2,400 units. It wouldn't be 44, 21 units for the entire city, right? So the intent was not building to the max on every site according to the number given on this figure. So we need to very, we need to clarify the intent here. So what's the 44, 21 units that was evaluated in the EIR? How does that match? If we build to the max on that specified here, that's probably like 40,000 units, I don't know. So then that means this map doesn't reflect the intent of the general plan. How do we clarify? So that is objective.
There may be a note in this table already that addresses your comment, which, and I think you're discussing this in the context of the Heart of the City Special Area text box on page five, but you're bringing up the Bob Road Special Area box as another example. Under Heart of the City, it says, in addition, figure LU2 could be amended to include a more generic note explaining that densities are provided for reference purposes only, I'm adding only there, and that specific densities are established by the general plan land use map or a specific plan. So where the land use map is more specific, or in the case of perhaps a special area plan, conceptual plan or a specific plan, we could point to those.
I know that like Monta Vista area has this language that it's per land use map. And it does have more detailed than, I guess, the land use designation there. However, for like Bob Road area, it doesn't have a finer designation there. And so what my, my, my question is really, when we did the general plan in 2014, they, the intention was to estimate 4,421 units. And if we are saying developer can now build to the max of what's specified in this LU2 map, it wouldn't add up. So how do we make sure that this map, the numbers here would not be abused because we did not specify it, the intent clearly? So it's, the max would be 44, 21 units that we studied in the EIR. Because if we build any more than that, it's beyond the EIR, then we will have to redo the EIR.
So one way to do it, Vice Mayor, would be to add a note like in the Monta Vista box that says, per the general plan land use map, or per staff and city attorney's recommendation on page five of this table, that specific densities are established by the land use map or in a specific plan. I don't actually know if there's a plan corresponding to the Bob Road area, but...
No, there's not.
Okay.
Maybe the staff can come back with a solution. I'm just raising, this is a concern that our, we don't have an objective standard on exactly how much people can build up to the capacity. What do we mean by that? Because apparently 20 units per acre for every acre of the Bob Road is, was not an intent.
Yeah. And the Bob Road area is of special concern because it contains a lot of buildings that the owners would probably love to tear down and redevelop as something else. And it is an area that would probably be good for more housing. So we should be, we should have the same kind of box for Bob Road that we have for the other areas.
Yeah. I need to clarify, I'm not trying to reduce the density on housing. I'm not trying to say we don't want to build the 20, 20 units per acre. What I'm saying is we want to clarify the intent of this kind of map when we put a number there, right? It's not meant to apply to everywhere on that, how many acres there.
So I just want to clarify your comments. So your concern is that you don't, you believe the original 10, 2014 was not to have the 20, 20 units per acre per that area, but rather just 20, 20 units per footprint of a potential build out of that site?
That I wasn't under counsel, I guess, Darcy.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, you could kind of stretch it out to absurd results, right? I mean, you could say, well, what's to stop someone from creating a sub area of 1,000 acres? And say, look, you know, this 1,000 acres is a sub area, the dwelling units per acres 20, I'm going to put 20,000 units on, you know, these two acres because I've defined the sub area as the area that this classification is applicable to. So, I mean, I guess, I guess the critical question is, how do we limit the ability of somebody to expand it out to these types of absurd proportions? Or what limits it right now? Does it have to be common ownership? Does it have to be definition within a sub area or a special area? What are those types of restrictions that we have, if any?
You know, it's hard for us to understand the intent in 2014. You know, typically with zoning, you attribute a density, and it covers a whole parcel in the development. You know, we look at the housing allocation sites, and those are giving a build out specifically for those parcels, like the Veranda was given 11, the Oaks is given 200. And so you looked at those specifically. For the rest of the parcels, let's talk about Bob Road for a minute here. Those are given 20 dwelling units an acre for the purpose, in case it is built out, it is built to that density, you know, unlike, you know, what the vice mayor's guessing the, I guess the intent, like I would be too. But we could clarify that to lower the potential build out for that site and explore those options. How do we not have a situation where we end up with 1,000 dwelling units on that road?
And also, I think we need to understand what's the current build out max. So I ask for that also because in order to really know, let's say, if everything built to the max according to the number that's currently on this figure, how many units are we talking about? So that means we need the acreage for Bob Road spatial area, we need the acreage for every one of this spatial area. And what's that max? And then we can then decide, is that really what we mean? As, so, right?
Well, I think the first, the first criteria needs to be preventing the apartment towers at Valco, where saying, all this land adds up to this many units, we put them 22 stories in the air and consolidate. So the first criteria is, it's very clear and specific that the housing is per acre. If it's sub acre, maybe there's a little room for negotiation, but you cannot go beyond the one acre perimeter and say, I'm going to take housing that is part of this slope on the hillside that's not buildable, and consider that extra acre as another 20 units that I'm going to pull back and make it taller, and 1,000 acres of which all of its quarry, and say, I'm going to just massive housing projects around the perimeter. So the first criteria is that you can't be combining acreage and consolidating the appropriate density, that right from the start. Then the next one is, for the area, what was the, or what do the residents want in terms of the amount of housing in the area? And in some respects, you wind up, if it's multi-owner parcels, the first one to the table is going to go for the maximum that he can get. And if the overall was not a truly continuous 20, 20, 20, 20, 20, 20, the first one to the table is going to say, well, my five acres, I want 20 per, so I'm going to get 100. And then the adjacent parcels come and ask, and we say, well, no, you, the area has already been exceeded, so I'm not sure how to handle that. But that first criteria to keep from pulling in housing based on other acreage, could be the same owner, and it could even be the same parcel, but, you know, it, you can't combine and drive up, you know, these apartment tower.
Okay. So coming back to the LU1, I see that, maybe it's just me not understanding, for example, under the Homestead spatial area, which is on the upper right corner of the LU1 figure, I don't know if you can bring that map up. So it says maximum residential density up to 35 units per acre per general plan land use map. So this, this is the other one that's like Monta Vista, so it deferred to the general plan land use map. And then under that, it also says, the second line, 15 units per acre southeast corner of Homestead Road and Blenny Avenue. I couldn't figure out which area this is referring to. Because the Homestead spatial area, so 15 units, so it's, it's partly in the land use map, and then partly specified here, in the southeast corner of the Homestead and Blenny, Homestead and Blenny. Oh, so it's that area, so I was thinking, so that's, okay. I guess I kind of figure out what that area is now, but then I'm just wondering, how come we have two different designations here? One is defer to land use map, but then one area is specified right here, just curious. And then the maximum height is 30 feet or 45 feet. The 45 feet is south side between Deanza and Stelling. South side between Stella, Deanza and Stelling. Okay, so that's 45. Okay, I think I understand that now. I was, I was reading the map wrong, okay. So just wondering, though, how come some have per land use, some doesn't? How, anyone knows how is this determined?
You mean the maximum height, how it differs from one area to another in densities?
Also, for the same area, how come part of it, we say per general plan land use map, part of it, we say 15 units per acre?
So the 15 units per acre is actually just referred to a certain portion of that area?
So why is not, why don't we just mark that in the land use map? Why do we do it separately?
I mean, it could be just...
And also, when I looked at the land use map for the Homestead spatial area, it specified land use for different portions, but it doesn't really say units per acre, I think. It specified land use.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so maybe I can figure that out later.
Your previous question, are you asking why the 15 units is pulled out separately or indicated differently than the, than the general plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, I looked at the land use map for the Homestead area. There are some area that's, do you have the map, or land use map? It, it has an area that's marked a commercial slash residential, but no units per acre or anything. So is that intentional? Or, oh, so then it's 35 units per acre, I guess? Then I have a question, how come sometimes we say up to 35 units, sometimes say 15 units? Don't they mean the same thing? When we say 15 units, do we mean minimum 15 or up to 15? Actually, there is a big difference if it's minimum 15 or up to 15, or it has to be exactly 15.
It's up to, I mean, it's just, it's just the way it's worded. So both 35 and 15 are essentially maximums.
So it's maximum, so both should be up to 15 or up to 35. Then maybe that we should be consistent so that we don't have up to in some place and no up to in another place.
You know, it's interesting, because this problem of consolidation, if you were to say 15 units per acre, you would expect on an acre, on any given acre, you can only have up to 15 units.
That's not true.
But that's not true, because of course, if the parcel encompasses 100 acres, according to the way that we've been calculating it for at least one project, if you only want to put all the residential units on one acre, then you could put potentially 1,500 units on that one acre, as long as it's one 100 acre, you know, parcel. So I was going to say, one would think that other types of restrictions, such as height restrictions, should solve that. But I mean, it's pretty astounding at how, you know, it's pretty astounding how But I I I mean, it's pretty astounding at how, you know, it's pretty astounding how creative people can get. And and they could always make their units smaller, I mean, it's one of these things where. You know, well, you know, well, let me see what I could do within X number of feet then. Um so, you you know, but you don't, you don't wanna just kind of push the envelope to the point where, you know, it's like you're almost enticing people to like show you that they can be whatever. But I mean, um that I I I find it a little bit problematic. I mean, because it's just so open-ended with regard to what the true dwelling units per acre, well, what the true density is. Because you you just don't know, I mean, if if people are allowed to consolidate all of this landmass. You know, up to a very large proportion or uh up to a very large amount, and we don't define any limits, you know, and we don't address this problem. Then uh we we do have potential, you know, uh issues in the future for other developments and other, you know, um uh uh other pieces of land. I mean, you you know, you imagine maybe fifty years into the future where. Uh I I'm not trying to pick on anything, but you know, it's a very large piece of land out on the, you know, western foothills. Um in in the quarry, you know, I mean, that's like, it could be five hundred acres. And if you're defining a dwelling unit, uh you know, density of even ten, ten, ten dwelling units per acre. And they wanna put it all in like a couple acres, you've got, all of a sudden, you're going from ten to, you know, five thousand. And so I I I mean, I I think it might behoove us to kind of confront this problem at this point. And whether we say to ourselves, well, we're gonna solve this through putting other restrictions like height, density and setback, I think that's one thing, but.
Or maybe far.
Maybe the floor area ratio.
Floor area ratio, and I I wonder, other cities must have faced the the same thing. Maybe they have other ways of better quantifying density.
I I I mean, is this something that you guys have run into in other jurisdictional contexts where, you know, they they do tend to consolidate acreage and, you know. I I because when 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 you have something as as straightforward seeming as, you know, saying thirty-five dwelling units per acre. You would think that on any given acre, you can only find thirty-five dwelling units, but that's absolutely not true. I I mean, a- and and when you combine that with no height restrictions, then you're in real trouble.
You could have, yeah.
Right.
Thirty-five hundred units on an acre.
Right, right.
If you own a hundred acre, right?
So, you you know, maybe, maybe, maybe that warrants some follow-up research.
Are you looking for something or a restriction in order to um say force some kind of distribution? Over a set piece of acreage, for example?
Well, just so we know what the true density uh maximum would be.
To be able to avoid like um. You get mass, you know, massing it into one.
Well, a very finite, you know, well, very.
Is that what you're looking to do?
Well, I'm I'm looking to not turn a certain, you know, density into something that could be. Any number of times greater than that in in practical terms.
Yeah, I mean, but what the height limits will help somewhat, but as you said, you know, they could put in units that are a hundred square feet.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if we wanna get in the business of specifying minimum unit sizes, or we already have that, actually.
We 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 get it, we we hear you.
Okay, all right, great.
I was just trying to provide some interpretive services.
Oh, sure, no, no.
I'm wondering, are there, do other cities specify unit size? Because I think we have, I think Lisa Warren spoke many times in the city council meeting that. How come we only define units per uh in a building? Unit can be small, it could be very large, and then that. What do we really mean by a unit? It could be five hundred square foot, it could be five thousand square foot, right? And then also, if we want to have a housing that's more affordable, then maybe we want to specify. Size per unit so that we have more smaller moderate size.
Well, well, you could do average unit size, so you could, you know, distribute them.
Berkeley asked for development proposal to calculate the average unit size. But then I think they did it for, I don't know if they have specified that in their code, but I know their application asked for that. And then when they calculate the density bonus, they ask you to calculate the average unit size after density bonus and the average needs to remain the same. So that you don't add thirty-five percent units, that's all huge or all tiny, I don't know which one is better. So they try to use the average unit size to maintain the consistency. So I don't know if that's possible to say, okay, we would like average unit size to be something.
Can we just look, can you look at what other cities have done and, you know, like Darcy said. People will become creative on how to get around the intent, but we can at least try to plug as many holes as we can.
Sure, we'll 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 research and see what other cities have done, but as you say, in general, cities tend to avoid setting a. Minimum or maximum uh square footage uh because.
But did they ever set an average square footage?
I don't believe so, because usually that they they wanna, depending on the market, right? Depending on what's what's in right now, maybe micro units are more popular versus large single-family units. But we can take a look and see trends and change.
But on the other hand, the city has kind of an interest in. Encouraging developers to build units for families, you know? We don't like what, you know, it's great that the SB thirty-five project has twelve hundred and one affordable units, but it has zero for families. And if there was something we, something, some objective standard we could come up with that would prevent that. Of course, they would take it as a concession anyway, if they could. Which um, yeah, maybe you can address the con, uh later on or now, address the comments in the letter from Commissioner Moore. Regarding um concessions and heights. Did you read that?
You want to?
We we just received the email, I don't believe we have a chance to um to vet the email uh for response.
We'll address it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, please, cuz I, yeah, um cuz she may understand this better, well, I'm sure she understands it better than than me. Um I can't speak for the rest of the council. But yeah, though, we don't want them to use, to be able to take height as a concession, basically.
So we can study that, maybe um include that when you you come back. And one other thing I see, the other city does do is they specify percentage of mixed-use development. That's for retail, for housing, for office, which we don't really do. And I find out that in if we read our current uh code, literally, someone can build. A project on Stevens Creek with zero retail, because we only specify max retail allocation with no minimum. So so I'm wondering, should we clarify that? But I also then noticed that the Oaks uh development, they mentioned the heart of the city has this seventy percent frontage requirement. But what does that really mean? Frontage is seventy percent of retail? I don't know if they have a s- objective standard on that. Maybe we need to look at that.
Right, is it square feet or just, could you have like really shallow, shallow floors, but a lot of frontage?
Yeah, so and what do you consider retail? That's the 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 mid, the way I've been struggling with, what do you consider as retail frontage? And so if that, we can clarify.
Yeah, maybe that's an objective standard to define retail. I know this has been an issue, you know, hotels as well, I put retail on the ground floor, now I get an extra story. And the retail is, you know, a candy machine or something, um because we've never defined retail. Or is retail a restaurant that really only the hotel patrons would ever ever eat at?
I do wanna clarify that the HOC standards for for retail within that seventy-five percent you're discussing. It is defined in the in the Heart of the City specific plan under um under uses in there. And um it does refer back to their, to our CG ordinance to what what we do consider as active retail uses. So such as things as like restaurants, clothing stores, even banks and real estate offices are considered within that seventy percent um. Minimum requirement for.
And what about medical offices?
Medical offices are not.
Okay.
So.
Because I know at Metropolitan, they could not lease out the uh mixed uses retail because nobody wanted it. And they came to the council, I was not on the council then, and said, can we lease this to a dental office or something? Because, you know, nobody wants this, and the council said yes.
Yeah, there is a, there there is a Heart of the City exception process, which a property owner or applicant can apply for to get above that um. Twenty-five percent maximum from non-commercial, non-commercial services, types of uses.
So I mean, my my feeling on that is if they couldn't lease it as retail, then they need to lower the rent until it's leased. Because they got all the housing and the enormous profit from the housing because they promised the retail. And if they have to lease it at a loss, so be it.
Yes, so I I do wonder about that, like Palo Alto, they promised a grocery store. And then be, I I guess they have some language in the development agreement. If the, they have, the the grocery store decide to move out, they continue to pay the rent. However, the community doesn't really have access to a grocery store. Even though it does generate income for the developer. And then they were able to find them because it needs to actually have a store there. So I guess that goes to the mayor's question.
Right.
If we require they actually have, you cannot be vacant for however long, then they will be required to lower the rent to make sure that there is something there. This is also a way kind of to ensure we do have retail shops. That's not just space, because otherwise, if we say seventy percent frontage, they can make it a very, very tiny store. Which no, no one wants to use, they don't care, they satisfy the requirement, right?
Well, and and to be fair to the developer, when I've talked to some developers, uh they say, well. We put in the retail because it was the only way we could get the house, and we really didn't wanna do it. We know it's gonna be difficult or impossible to lease, but the planning department said we had to do it. And I I think Veranda was supposed to have retail and, you know, so personally, I would like. Given what's happened with a lot of the mixed-use projects in Cupertino, at um city center over there where they can't keep the restaurants and. And uh Trevigna and and all these places, um Montebello. I would like, we need the housing more than we need more boba shops, I think. So going forward, I would like personally to have more housing only and less, less mixed use. And let the re- let the retail be separate.
I would disagree, I guess for along Stevens Creek, if you, that's, I think, our only commercial strip in Cupertino. Because Deanza is mostly office. So if we want Stevens Creek to be walkable, enjoyable for people to walk and shop. You would need to have a continuous uh commercial shops like we see in the big cities. You walk, you don't have, but if I, if we have pure residential building like in El Camino. You'll see a whole block of only residential building, then commercial area would be disconnected. Once it's disconnected, people are less likely to walk from one commercial area to the next. Then we don't generate that foot traffic that will keep our commercial alive. So I think it's important, I like that Heart of the City has this requirement of seventy percent frontage. But then we need to clarify, how do we specify that so that viable retail can be in this seventy percent frontage? So that it's not just facelift, uh window dressing frontage.
So I think what I'm hearing is that as we're going through these um proposals that are before you, you're also identifying additional objective standards that you want staff to consider adding.
Yeah, in the future.
And so it, for instance, we have the issue of exploring ways to have the um. The uh the density not necessarily be clustered all on one part of the site where it uh has the actual um units per acre more than what would be allowed if it was dispersed throughout the site. And ways to do that and have plant, have staff look at that and come back to council, maybe as various proposals. There's a proposal to consider doing minimum um retail in addition to maximum retail in areas where that's specified. And that's something that staff could look at. So um, you know, that's obviously within what you all can be discussing tonight, if you wanna identify additional objective standards. Um I think staff has has asked for questions that, you know, that they'd like to see direction on as far as moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, can you look at what other cities have done with, to avoid the problem of, okay, I have a thousand acres, I'm gonna put all the housing on one acre. So somebody else must have come up with some plan to prevent that.
If I may add, Mayor, really quickly, so the consolidation item is actually a a an item in our phase two. So it's already been identified to study and come back to you. I think the Heart of the City discussion is especially on the seventy-five percent frontage is also in our phase two, and we're prepared to come back to you with that item as well.
Okay, good, so.
And at this moment, could I address the density bonus issue that came up in Commissioner?
Just a minute, let me clarify, so, yeah, I think the frontage specify exactly what kind of retail space we are looking for can be a phase two. That's more complex. However, at the minimum, I would like phase one to at least have a minimum retail space percentage specified. So that in case we have a streamlined project, it won't have zero uh retail for Heart of the City. So can we, um because that, I assume it's simple? Just a number?
Yeah, we'll we'll take it like that, yeah.
Okay, so density bonus.
Oh, yes, uh thank you, so we did receive um uh Kitty Moore's email sent in her personal uh capacity and reviewed it. We have um analyzed this issue uh for for the city um in the past, and our conclusion is that uh the city cannot uh simply prohibit um.
Height as a concession?
As a blanket matter, height as a concession. There, now, if if the developer, if a developer sought height as a concession, part of that request and calculation must be that that increased height. Impacts the uh, lowers the cost of development some way, and there is an argument in theory that um raising a height could 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 actually increase cost. And therefore not be a concession. However, even if we leave concessions out of the conversation, there's also this waiver requirement as a separate matter, and the city is required to grant waiver if requested. And when I say waiver, I mean from um development standards in the city's code. Um and must grant the waiver if it can be shown that those standards would impede somehow the the implementation of the density bonus. And so if a developer showed that without the height increase, um that they're requesting as a waiver, um they couldn't, they couldn't do their density bonus. Then that would um, that that would would likely, under our own analysis, require the city to grant that waiver. Now, there is an issue brought up in this email that I would like some additional time to research, and that is this, um I I have not had a chance to review, nor has staff, this Santa Rosa white paper example where there are. Uh it looks like there are some pre-approved concessions, um and that's something that we can come back to with an answer.
So for Heart of the City, which the Vice Mayor mentioned, um was, is Veranda, is that in the heart of the city?
Yes.
So in Veranda, there was supposed to be retail, and the council decided, no, we want eight more units instead of retail. Because retail really wouldn't have worked at that location. So I would be hesitant to require a certain percentage of retail, um just a blanket like that, maybe in larger complexes.
This is for streamlining, so if it's BMR, I think I would agree, we can make an exception for that.
You mean if it's a hundred percent affordable? Not BMR.
And that's something we could explore too, and you know, just with the Veranda was, you know, we we never required it. We said, there's a, there's a process to eliminate the retail component, and that's what they, one of their, one of their applications was the HOC exception. Which would, which eliminated, we we made the findings, basically, that they didn't have that to retail the bottom.
So I'm thinking of um the proposed development at uh McClellan and Foothill. Where the bike shop is now and the store that's gone. And I went to the, a meeting that the developer held, and I said, why are you doing this? There's no reason to have this, all this retail here, we need more housing. He said, I don't wanna do retail, he said, I wanna do all housing, but someone in planning department said I couldn't do it. but someone in planning department said I couldn't do it. So here it is. So Ben, you can speak to that.
I, I think the project came in with a certain level of, of retail component, out of respect for the existing retail. Also, there's some desirability from the existing neighborhood to want to see some level of retail there. So I think the project came with, with retail. I think planning staff at the time did not disagree with that, whether how we resulted in the actual number of square footage for retail, I'm not, I'm not certain. But the projects are ongoing, so we still have the opportunity to discuss the project right now.
Okay. I mean, it seems like right now we really want to concentrate on addressing housing, and it would have added more housing units and at least maybe another one or two BMR units.
But people who live in housing does need to eat, they need to buy stuff, they need convenience stores.
Right. But this is a very small develop, it's not like, you know, a thousand units. I think it was how many, twenty or something?
Yeah, I think it's less than that.
Or less than that.
I think, I think the zoning is, is also, is mixed use, right, right, John? So they have to have some level of combined uses.
Okay. So another issue that I'd like to address is the amenity space. I think we have seen, we don't really have a definition of what can be in the amenity space or even how large that can be. We have seen that amenity space could be bigger than even the residential space or even the office space that's actually leasable. So maybe it's for the phase two, but I think we need to have a handle on what they can have in, what, what they can claim as amenity. Because otherwise, someone can basically put a shopping mall in there and the way the city doesn't get any sales tax, but then they can have all kinds of stuff in, in the amenity space. So.
All right. Yeah, answer, and then I want to go to public comment.
I was just gonna say that was, that's, that item is in our attachment D, and attachment D has nine items for consideration. And, and if you want to go there now, we certainly can. What the vice mayor is discussing now, amenity space, that's number four on attachment D. I understand that you want to move that on to phase two, that we can certainly do that, come back to you.
Okay, can I?
So do we have, do you guys agree we need to define amenity space for our project?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I'm going to go to public comment. I have three cards. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. So welcome, Jennifer.
Goodie, God. Good day, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and, you know, I've been coming here since 2003, and this is really setting a precedent. We have never had to defend ourselves to the state. And observing what is going on in Oregon and Portland, I see great similarities between thirty-five HSB fifty-three thirty and the ADU bills. It's also hitting Seattle. And what's the hell that's being wrought over Oregon? I, I'm a bit resentful about having to define my city to the state. I consider the state hostile, just as Oregon's government is hostile to their residents, and Portland is hostile to their residents. So yes, I'm a bit ticked off because it's like I have to define my quality of life and bow down to legislators in Sacramento that I did not elect and I disagree with. And the fact that we are following what is happening in Portland and Oregon, it is highly obvious, even to idiots, that there is some similarity and a coup d'etat is actually happening on the West Coast. But there again, this is the hell we're in right now. So yes, we need to start asking questions, and we have to keep our act robust and able so that we're not going to get caught in the middle of this, whatever drama is evolving in the West Coast. I think that it's very, very important that we sit on our ethics, everything that Cupertino stands for, Heart of the City. I, I came across something in San Jose recently, and it was ninety dwelling units per acre. That is what they're defining as urban residential. Well, believe me, that was mind-boggling. I'm assuming, I think that was a half acre lot, and it's twenty-two stories. San Jose has just upped the areas around the airport that had been zoned to ten stories, around Iradon are now twenty-two stories by the airport. I'm glad to hear that you guys are actually doing things like defining the height. How, how large an area can you build this on? Are we going to have a developer that's going to be trying everything to come and cut corners and make problems for the city just to make a fast buck? Yeah, let's tighten it up. We're being forced to do this, and maybe it's really, really good, but believe me, that frontage in front of Valco, I'm sorry, in front of Valco on Stevens Creek Boulevard, regardless of what the owner thinks it is in Heart of the City, and that thirty-five foot setback goes from one side of perimeter road all the way over to Wolf. Thank you.
The, in San Jose by the airport, I thought there was a height limit because of the airport.
It was, but they have upped it to twenty-two stories. I have that at firsthand from people who actually had worked on property that was bought by Google near there. It's by the airport. It was zoned ten stories. It is now twenty-two stories.
It's going to be like the old Hong Kong airport, if you've ever flown in there, where you're flying between the buildings and the airplane can look into people's.
Or in the opening sequences of Blade Runner, if you haven't seen that movie. I mean, I, it is mind-boggling, but that was, that area was zoned ten stories because of the airport. San Jose has done something, and it's now twenty-two stories. I don't want to keep harping on San Jose, but it's, yeah, it's their airport. Maybe they'll crash into it.
Let's hope not. Okay. Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Are there any more cards? I think there must be another card, because I saw someone filling one out. Welcome.
Mayor Scharf, city council members and staff. I have specific things related to phase one. First, I encourage you to revisit phases one point five and two after phase one is done, because you might have a different perspective. Minimum retail, it's not just Heart of the City. I'm looking at the map, and you've got South Valco, city center, Oaks Gateway, North Valco. If you're going to do retail, you should specify minimums for all of them. See, the other thing is, page four of A, where it's, discussed footnote four, the South Valco area, remove the reference to Valco Shopping District, like you say, but also remove the words primary in bulk from footnotes one, four, and five, and do not change the slope on Homestead and in the South Valco Park. It references a specific resolution, but that had nothing to do with that area. It just had to do with Valco. Definitions. The general plan, appendix A, is land use definitions. You should break out parks. It says parks and open space. That's where you could define that it's not a sidewalk or a median. Define retail, please. You could put mixed use, you could maybe put a minimum there. That would apply to all of it. Density. You could say that density is the max allowed on one acre, and the density of multiple acres in a parcel can't be compressed into one. At least put it there for now. And also the South Valco area, sixty feet with retail. This has been abused, so please put a minimum. And that's it.
Do you mean a minimum of retail?
A minimum of retail.
Okay.
Because.
Right. Yeah, I agree with that. It has been abused.
Yeah, the also, the one for one, you know, the forty by forty retail does not justify thirty thousand feet above forty-five foot height. That's the Main Street predicament. It's gotta be one to one.
Please, yeah.
Does the staff understand that?
So Peggy also mentioned something about the definition of parks and open space. So do we have anything in there to define parks as being not up in the sky, but on the ground?
I think, no, we do not currently have a definition that says that parks should not be up in the sky, but that is an item in one point five to be studied.
Okay.
And report back to you.
I think that's really important to get that in there, because San Jose had the same issue on, maybe the same building Jennifer's referring to, the Valar. So the park is up on the top of the building, and they go, well, it's open to residents that don't live there during certain hours. They can take the elevator up to the top and have a picnic there, whatever. But, I mean, the reality is no one's going to do that, right? It's just a way to get around the park requirement.
So I think we're talking about streamlined projects. When it's streamlined, we want the park to be on the ground, I guess. So in case they come to the council, there are good design, we might allow parks on second floor or other places. But then also, I think in the one point five document, phase one point five, there are several considerations on how to define parks. But then you are differing that to the parks master plan. But the park master plan, I think, is not considered a document containing objective standard. And also, the park master plan itself doesn't really have standard. It has a lot of very general statement. So I don't think we can use park master plan as a place to define these things.
Yes, you're correct. I think, I think our intention is not to rely solely on a park master plan. I think what we're trying to say, and maybe you could be better at this, is that we will coordinate as the park master plan is kind of ahead, or it's already in the process, to make sure that there's a reference, that's consistency, that's reference in, in both documents that we end up producing.
Okay.
And you see that in phase one point five, the bulk of items is about parks. So that's, that's emphasis on one point five.
Then, and also, I think I'd like to see that at least for phase one, that's have a very minimum clarification on parkland. So we can, at least in phase one, define parkland has to be on the ground.
Right. Yeah, I have a problem waiting till one point five for that as well.
That should be simple, right? Something that can be easily.
It's never simple.
I mean, just on the ground, how hard is it to, to make that?
Okay. All right. Let me finish the, the public comment. Lisa Warren, followed by Kitty Moore.
Hello. So first, I'd like to ask that in any way possible, based on a survey in two thousand, well, you have the survey says booklet, but based on surveys from residents, anything that can be done to possibly increase the one point, the one to one building envelope to one point five to one, please do, anywhere and everywhere. And I'm glad that Vice Mayor brought that up. And, okay, and Peggy mentioned this in one spot. Footnote four also refers to bulk, but you did not take that out as you did in footnote one. And if it's important to come out in footnote one, it should come out in footnote four. And she mentioned footnote five, but I'm not even sure what that one is.
So, so can, can that be taken out in that, or was there a reason it was left in?
I don't know if there's a reason it was left in. I don't think the commission had discussed that, but I don't see that it would impact the language if we were to remove them as well.
Okay, great. Sorry, continue. I'll pause the timer.
So in attachment, well, oh, attachment B is actually labeled attachment two, so I think that should be corrected for clarification, at least in what I printed out. And in attachment D, the nine suggested comments, I think most of them should be included. And you're being asked by staff to, which items do you wish to be added to either phase one, one point five, or two? There was just a comment about a couple of these, or at least one, the amenity space, maybe it was, to be added to phase two. But I think you need to go through those lists and say if you want to add them to phase one, one point five, or one, or two. And in my opinion, many of them should be in phase one, if possible. Item seven, the minimum percentage of retail. We've had issues. Main Street is not following, from what I know, is not following the resolution requirements related to retail and the amount of rest, the percentage of the retail that can be restaurants. I think they're over their restaurant a lot, and we don't have other retail. And if I'm wrong, please correct me. And if you correct me, please explain in detail. And also, what are you calling, building, architectural features, chimneys, bay windows. As I understand it, architectural features are not to be occupied. They are features to enhance the design, but they are not supposed to be occupied space. Once again, at Main Street, an architectural feature that was allowed after the fact and told it could not be occupied is occupied big time. Four stories of occupying a space that's not supposed to be occupied.
What, what are you referring to?
Well, as I understand it, and I think there's other people that understand the same thing, there's a bump out on the offices that was supposed to, that goes towards Tantau, and it was supposed to just be space and unbox the building. Well, there are tables and chairs and probably, at some point, there were desks. There's people in that space. It's like a tower. It's a bump out. And that's not supposed to be happening. It increased their square footage. Right or wrong?
Was it supposed to be left empty or what? You don't know.
I have people that know. Trust me.
Okay.
Yeah, they, those break the, the building planes and were not intended to be occupied. And when I met with Gary at the planning, he said, well, we won't know until it's built, but they're not supposed to occupy it. And I showed him the drawings that show floor one, floor two, floor three, floor four. I said, but it's showing that it's going to be occupied. He says, we'll have to wait till it's built. So I think we need to be very clear, you know, that.
Okay. All right. Continue. You have eight seconds.
Wait a minute.
I, I keep pausing the timer for you, so I'm not taking away your time.
Okay. Okay, parks should be moved to phase one, not one point five if possible. That's a recommendation from one point five from two, but I would like to see it on phase one, because that's a, an important thing. And the whole thing about consolidation of density per acre, please plug those holes in any way you can, because we know it will happen. Creative is, is a very kind word to use. And then on an upside, thank you for this, which I received in the mail today. And it's, it's an eye-catching thing that people aren't just going to throw away, I hope. So kudos to the marketing team in getting this message out for the survey on tobacco policies.
All right, thank you.
Everyone, please fill it out. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, next is Kitty Moore. Is Kitty still here? Okay. Welcome, Commissioner Moore.
I guess I'm, I'm not really sure if I'm representing myself only here or not.
Can the city attorney comment on?
Yeah, that's a good question.
The issue is if the planning commission has taken an action and made recommendation as the whole of the commission, then you can convey what the planning commission decided as a member of the planning commission. If you're talking about recommendations that haven't been made by the majority of the planning commission, then you're speaking as an individual.
Well, I'll start with speaking, representing myself only.
Okay.
So first, I think that this should be a joint session between the Planning Commission and the City Council. I think that you're preventing yourselves from getting other information from the Planning Commissioners and it could have helped move this along a little more smoothly. Uh I was listening to it at home and had comments that I came down here to make. So this, these are the comments which I had for the Planning Commission Objective Standards Review. And I'm showing it just to get it into the record. I've got a few little highlights I'd like to make on it. One, you know, your Sustainability Commission is going over the Cal Green Tier Two standards, and I would like to see that moved ahead because of the climate change crisis. And also, within that, I'd like there to be some study on the restaurant impact to the environment because we have ninety-five percent of our new retail is coming in as restaurants, which huge impact on the sewage system and water. The density bonus law, I heard that we need to have a municipal code update, that our municipal code isn't compliant or consistent with the state law. So I would like to have that probably as a separate study session. And I did send in an email about that. I'm mentioning a traffic map. There is a, there's a map in the general plan which has the arterials and other streets defined. And in our session, the Planning Commission, we, so this is speaking as a whole, agreed that there were other streets which fall into the same category as needing an arterial one-to-one setback. And I'd like to see if that's, if it's not in your notes, it should be. And also, the under, falling under sustainability, we should have a roof policy for white solar and green roofs. In the general plan, so the general plan, as far as I understand, was passed in three, three times by City Council in December, in April or May, and in October of twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. You have a land use map that shows up in October of twenty fifteen. It is not in your general plan online, and that needs to be. And it's also been updated and has different revisions. So that, what I would prefer is that every single revision to that plan be noted at the bottom of that map. But it should be added into the online general plan. The issue with that map is that you've got residential and non-residential land use designations. And non-residential land use designations are predominantly non-residential. So for instance, if you have an SB thirty-five type program, that requires two-thirds residential. But if it has a non-residential land use designation, I don't see how you're gonna get to the two-thirds. And that, you know, that's a question, I suppose, for the courts. But it should be answered here. It should be a very simple question. And then lastly, I heard you discussing the density bonus law email that I'd sent. So really, what I'd like you to look at in a density bonus study session is the Santa Rosa White Paper?
Yeah, we discussed this before you arrived.
Excellent, okay.
I don't know if you heard us online or not.
I heard you, yeah. But so I would, I would prefer this to be like a separate study session just on density bonus, where you look at what the other cities are doing and make a decision based on that. And I do have a, take a issue with the, with the not being able to do some limitations on the height increase. And that's from the bottom of my email, you'll see, increase. They have recommended pre-approved concessions. Increase of the larger of up to twelve feet or ten percent beyond current maximum permitted. So I would like to have that focused on from a legal standpoint. If there is some way you can say that you can, because if a developer really realistically needs to add two floors, you know, maybe twenty feet for residential to their project in order to get the thirty-five percent bonus, then I'd like to see if there's legally a way that you can say that it's, we'll, we'll give you twenty feet and codify that. And I'm not sure why or how a developer could say that they're gonna go in with twenty-two and twenty-four stories. So if you can't, if you can't ask them for twenty feet, how are you able to say no when they're gonna say we're gonna go to two hundred and fifty?
Seth, you were gonna look into that, right? Okay.
Okay, excellent, okay.
So finish up, so.
Oh, well, here's just a bit of a warning. This is uh one of our residents found this. So this is right across the street from Valco. It's available right now for development, so.
Where, oh, that's like where the falafel store in United Furniture?
Yes, here's, right, here's Valco, here's United Furniture, yeah.
Yeah, it's funny, they never asked for anything in the arena. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all the public comment cards, so we can bring it back for any more discussion. Rod, you haven't said anything the whole night. Are you awake?
No, no, yeah, absolutely. And I, I appreciate my fellow council members wanting to make sure that things are clarified. I think that's all the good. I know that having been here when we did twenty fourteen, there was, you know, general plan amendments, there was a lot of discussion around how do we, how do we build a system that is prescriptive, meaning encouraging the kind of development that we'd like to have with enough flexibility to make sure that, yeah, good projects that we might like to have actually occur? So I think one thing to think about is we can get very proscriptive, meaning we can talk a lot about how we limit this and make sure we constrain that and, you know, put the screws down, I think is what one of the speakers said. The general issue, right, is economics, the economic forces change. If the screws are put down too tight, it becomes an impediment to getting good projects in the pipeline that we might want. And if that's your intention, okay. I would just suggest that we think about ensuring that through economic cycles and all, we have enough prescriptive elements and maybe less proscriptive elements. Things, things that we can do to make sure, we wanna get more housing, for example, not over-constraining the problem set, right, from, to use an engineering turn of phrase. So that's kinda where I'm coming from on this. The idea was with the general plan after, I don't know, it was like an eighteen-month process. And, yeah, I know, we, it was even longer than the meeting last night, right, that we had. And it was really hard. Darcy joined us on the dais for the first time that night, and it was head-swimming exercise for all of us. But the the, the idea was if we have, if the council has some flexibility to be able to say, we know that there are certain things a developer might like to do, and I think you used the word exception. There are things we might like them to do. We don't wanna give them all of it by right. We want to actually have a holdback on things like hotel rooms. So you don't by right come to the planning department and have carte blanche. We would like you to come in and have a conversation with us and see what might, what could be done. And so that led to us getting some, some benefits and other things. Same with with office space. So I think, you know, you might think about what we're doing here. I, I think the clarifications are very helpful. If you wanna go through another general plan amendment, right, where you're, you're doing more proscriptive things, you ought to think about, if your objective is to build a lot more housing, how, what, can we do some listening to make sure that we're doing the sorts of things that might incent an Irvine or other developers who build housing to actually have it come to pass here? So, thank you.
So, I mean, good points. My concern is that we shouldn't rush to do rezoning for every economic cycle. I recall the Mezurex buildings on Bub and McClellan. So a housing developer came in, oh, these buildings are obsolete, they'll never be used. I wanna tear it down and build housing. The plan didn't go through. Apple took over the buildings, renovated them. The developer at that time, after the housing was defeated, said, these buildings are coming down. And, well, they didn't come down. They stayed up. And it's actually, you know, quite a nice Apple satellite campus now. So we should be flexible, but at one point, there was a huge surplus of office in the Bay Area after the last recession. Everybody said, oh, you know, I wanna build housing. Now, now that everybody wants to build office because it's more profitable, and nobody wants to build retail. So let's not rush into rezoning or redefining all these areas just based on what's most profitable at the time, because this kind of spot zoning is gonna come back to haunt us.
So I think intent today is not to be restrictive or be, try to rezone or do anything. What we are doing today is try to plug the holes because in two thousand fourteen, at the time, the general plan was approved with the, with understanding that most of the development would come to the council for approval. And if we don't say everything clearly, developers will try to present a good project because they know the property will provide input. The council will have to consider and then approve. But now we are facing a different situation. They could come in and just streamline the project. We might not have any say about that. That's why we want to be clear about what's the intent that wasn't unspoken, but then most likely understood. So that's clarify, filling those holes of understanding. I think that's the intent today, right? So, yeah, and so that, I think we have a request to schedule a density bonus study session. So when we do that study session, I would also like to add, can we somehow find a way to make sure the justification for concessions that we get from the applicant are actually justified? Because I think they get to just write any reason. And how do we, how can we make sure those justification actually will reduce the project cost? Because intent of the law is the concession will reduce the cost of building BMR housing. And it hasn't been the case when they take, took the exception of reducing the size of the BMR housing while they have a huge amount of amenity space that they are building anyway. That, this concession of reducing unit size doesn't really reduce their construction costs because they could have used the, all the amenity spaces to provide BMR housing for families. But they didn't. We should have challenged them on that. So how, going forward, how can we do a better job of making sure that they are, they do provide justification for these concessions that actually reduce BMR housing, not just simply making more profit without? Yeah, so I don't know how to do that, or maybe other cities have a better handle at this. Let's look at Berkeley and San Francisco and see if they have a better way to review this thing, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so.
I'd like to tail on Liang's comment if I could. Well, I know in a city like San Francisco, and I believe Shoot Mahali has some real experience with this too, they did a real, a big negotiation, for example, to get all that BMR housing around the Transbay Terminal. So they had a, you know, there was a lot of upzoning of property. And, yeah, it was a very significant negotiation. So it was, from a general plan point of view, I think there were a lot of modifications made after that deal was negotiated. So I think in, in general, right, if you can bring landowners and potential developers to the table in a deal, you can, you can kind of craft something where everybody wins. And I, another example that I've talked about publicly in our city has been, you know, our interest in getting a transit hub or a center at the Oaks. So, okay, we have now an application that's come in, it's been analyzed. And I guess it would require some deviations. I don't know if that's enough to be able to have a discussion with the developer to compel them to do something like put a transit center or transit hub in. But, you know, it sometimes, when you want unusual things in specific locations, sometimes, yeah, it takes sitting down at a table and working out some deal that's then executed by the council and the owner under a development agreement. And that's how you get specific things that you might, you'd never have necessarily, right, other means to get. Thanks.
Anyone else? Paul, Darcy, or John? You're good?
I generally agree with the recommendations of the Planning Commission. And I'm gonna just follow up on one or two things, but I can, you know, hold those until, until Councilman Willie shares his thoughts.
So, excuse me, so we're really here, you know, the focus is making sure that our general plan really is what the residents of Cupertino want and need for their community. But I think it's very important, and we hear it, you know, in all of our discussions, but, you know, making it very clear for everyone, you know, there's people watching from home. And we, we want this to be a very inclusive community. We want to get more housing, to allow more people to come and call Cupertino their home. It's very important that it's not just lopsided, developer-driven. Right now, everything that's been proposed is only apartments. And that doesn't leave anything for residents to, to be able to look forward to in terms of having a place that they actually call a home. And so we really do want to try and get a balance. Yes, it's quick to get apartments built and stuff, but we want, you know, all those individuals that are out there that do want to have a place that they own, townhouses, condominiums, and be able to look forward to, okay, they have to rent initially, and then they look forward to, to being in a condominium or a townhouse, maybe moving into a existing traditional type of house, and calling Cupertino their home. And to me, this is really important that, over the last couple of years, has just really gotten left out of the discussion and, and the mix. And I think we're gonna get a lot more support from the residents if, you know, what winds up being proposed by developers are these projects that really have a balance, that really do, you know, allow people to, to come and be part of our community in a much more active way than just tenants in, in a large apartment complex. And so I hope that, I hope that wording gets out there. You know, we, we wind up being written up as a city that's not for housing, and that's truly not the case. What we're trying to do is make sure that, you know, the community itself becomes a better and better place and we facilitate as much housing as is appropriate for the community, the traffic, the schools, that we possibly can. And so hopefully, we're making progress in that. And so I'll... And so I'll pa, leave it to that.
Thank you. Deb?
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Do you have a suggestion?
I do have a suggestion. What I'm hearing is that we have gotten direction from council on item number one on the staff report. Does the city council wish to proceed with the items in attachment A? And it sounds like yes. So I'll need a confirmation of that.
Yes, okay.
And then I'm suggesting that we have plenty of room on the next couple of agendas. And since we have so much information here to kind of parse through and discuss, and not all of us, in fact, I would say a lot of us did not have time to kind of chew through the attachments before we could respond, mostly I'm talking about council, is that we continue the red, part of this to the next council meeting on October one, where we do have some room. October fifteenth, we do have a full agenda. But we'll, we can see if we can shift this around, because we have heard some of your priorities. And maybe go at it from, how would you prioritize these two separate phases of this particular work?
So, yeah, I think that's a great idea, especially, we're all very tired from last night.
Right.
So I would favor that.
I think it's in addition to attachment A, though, because I think there were, there are some simpler items I had requested to add.
Right, which were on different attachments, but we heard you. So that's why I'm saying we should bring it back reprioritized. Because we could do all of it in, in one phase, but it would be a much longer phase versus like a four-month phase versus the twelve to eighteen months piece. So let us do that in preparation for October one, is what I'm suggesting.
Okay, any objections to adjourning now?
So, I'm sorry, I, I still have, I think there was one question about pers, um, oh, should Darcy want, should, do you have something to say first?
No, I mean, out of, out of the nine items in attachment D, I, I can just make mine really quick. Out of the nine items in attachment D, the one that looked interesting, most interesting to me, I should say, was having one proposal for a development at a time, you know? And it just seems intuitive, because it, it just seems like there's been, I, I don't think proposals should be used as bargaining leverage, you know? And, and so I feel like maybe that would be something that we could look at just for the sake of, you know, trying to keep the scope of what a proposal is supposed to be so that you can evaluate it upon its own terms, so. Although I guess there might be some other reasons to have multiple proposals for the same space, you know? I don't know. But it's something I, I'd be interested in looking into and seeing what other jurisdictions are doing. If it's, if it's just a very unusual thing for us to be considering, then, okay, fine, you know? And, and perhaps in our investigation, we'll see some advantages that other jurisdictions have accrued a, as a result of doing that. It's just that from, from my limited perspective, looking in Cupertino, I don't really see a whole lot of benefit to our, our city for having that mechanism allowed.
And, or you could decide to be, if we don't find it in another city, you could decide to be a city that has that.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But that's why I'm suggesting is that we have preferences that are emerging, a priority list is emerging.
Right.
That kind of crosscuts the attachments that are, that accompanied the staff report. So that's why I'm suggesting we come back on October first with another follow-up session for this, since the agenda is loose.
Right.
Right, we have plenty of time then.
And then continue on that way.
So, okay, so one question. It seems like you're staff limited in getting all this done. So what is the situation with adding staff members or getting a part-time employee temporary or, or what, that would speed this up?
We are currently down two, but in the process of recruiting those two. However, they are kind of backfills, kind of coming up. If we get those two on, we are fully staffed. A lot of this work, I think, will be reliant on multiple levels of staff, but mostly reliant on senior, senior presidents like, like John. So it's, it is a lot of work, but we can bring, bring that back as well for October first and maybe follow-on meetings as well.
Okay, Liang?
So would it help the staff to have maybe a small task force with maybe, say, two planning commissioners, two council members, to help review all this? Because Kitty was recommending a joint meeting, that would be ten people, but maybe small concentrated, focused group.
I, I haven't experienced that, working with three other jurisdictions previously, but I don't know if there's any Brown Act issues or anything like that.
Right, I was going to ask if there's Brown Act issue with two and two.
There, there is, I believe, a case holding that if you have two from each body that are assigned to do work via the legislative body, that it would be a Brown Act meeting.
Okay.
So then if one from each?
No, it would be legal. It would just be a Brown Act meeting.
Yeah, it would just be noticed and open to the public, and they comment and that sort of thing. So that's, I'll, I'm, I'm just not sure what your intent was there, but I guess I'm saying that it's.
Yeah, you can't form an outside committee.
Right.
But you could have a Brown Act. Because, yeah, I appreciate having ten people together up here might be a little chaotic.
But maybe Kitty can help the staff researching certain things and.
I would ask that we could, we could bring back some suggestions at the next meeting following the reprioritization.
Yeah.
A very quick question. Where are we on the Cal Green standard consideration? I thought that, that was moving through planning or sustainability at this point. Does, does anyone know? Because I thought I'd heard some kind of agenda item for.
Are you discussing the reach codes?
Yes, correct.
Yes, so I think we've, we came through, was it planning commission? Planning commission for like, almost like a study session item. It was, it was, a presentation was made to them, and they submitted comments and, and received the, the presentation.
Okay.
At that point, and so we're looking for a timeline of six months, the reach codes.
Yeah, so, so the, so the recommendation is actually going back, I understand, to the Sustainability Commission before they finalize the next meeting for city council. But I believe it is, I think they're targeting for, have something back to you by around the end of year, something like that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, so one question I think was brought up by Lisa, maybe? What's the percentage of restaurants in Main Street? Do we have any code that specify a minimum or maximum percentage?
So, yeah, the, the use permit for the, the Main Street development capped at forty percent. However, it's a little deceiving because with the subsequent parking analysis, which was also a condition of approval for the use permit, they allowed certain food uses to qualify as like specialty, specialty stores or whatnot, which means that they function more as a, as a retail outlet, like a, like a clothing store or whatnot. You're talking, we're talking about like, things like Eighty-Five Degrees or, or Sullen Beans, which you go in for five, ten minutes, purchase what you, your goods, and then you leave. You're not sitting there waiting for a waitress or waiter to come serve your table. Two hours later, then you leave. So that was the, that was the, that was the agreement in the use permit, it was to do that. So, but I, to Lisa's point, they are fastly approaching their cap, if not already.
But they are not right now. Right now, I mean, the real restaurants do not exceed forty percent.
No, no, not at all.
So a place like Sullen Beans, I mean, do, do you go in and measure how long people stay there? Because I went there, and it's not, most people don't take out. They sit there and eat.
So could we, could we clarify how this relates to the objective standards?
All right, so I think we're done here.
Uh, wait, so the here, attachment D is my list of my nine items.
I was good with the suggestion we adjourn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my list of nine items, thank you for summarizing this. And so the first item.
We can't do this on October first?
I guess we can do this on October first.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're kind of worn out. Have to be on a plane tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you, everybody.